I would like to open up the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:31 PM. This is the Nashua Board of Education Finance and Operations Committee meeting, November 14th, 2018. We're coming to you from the Nashua High North Auditorium. And members present, Ms. Porter.
Here.
Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Guarino is here. Mr. Mosher is joining us by phone. Are you all by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Others present, we have Mr. Kaufman of the Board of Education, Mrs. Oden, President of Board of Education. We have Mr. Smith, Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Lively. Our first item on our agenda is substitute coverage discussion, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Donovan.
Okay. We're going to discuss, go through some data regarding the substitute coverage, and after I run through the exciting numbers, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel Lively, and she's going to give you, Rachel and Kelly.
La Mountain.
La Mountain. I was going to say La Montaine. Did some work on this. I had met with them previously, so I invited them to come and talk about some of the ideas they had when it comes to substitute coverage. So as you'll learn quickly, it's been a struggle the last couple of years. So we'll start with the first couple of, if you look in your pack at the first couple of slides. The first one of the fill rates by month for school year '17-'18, and for the first three months of school year '18. So the first page, you can see it's August of '18, September, and October. And the fill rate, which means the amount, the percentage of subs that actually came in versus what we needed, is in the far right. So you can see in August, which we only had a few days, it was 76 percent, which is okay. But then in the months of September and October, it went down to 60 percent and 57 percent. And I would suggest most schools that those percentages are a bit frustrated. Okay. The other sheet is the whole year, all of last school year, the same data. And as you can see, the fill rates go down. There's probably a high of, I believe it's about 75 percent in a couple of months. One was August, which was only a few days. Month of January was a good month. I'd suggest to you that that's probably the case because of college students that are available. And then you look at most of the other months, and it's in the low 70s, 60s. And, you know, February and March, it was 59 and 58 percent, and April was 56 percent. So, you know, the other thing I said, okay, well, do we, are our teachers out a lot? But when you run the percentages, they're out about 6 percent of their time, which is not a high number for most jobs. So could that be improved? Maybe, but I really don't think that's what our issue is. Okay. The next two pages, the colored graphs with the red and the blue. What that is, is comparing 2017 to 2018 September, and 2017 to 2018 October. And it's by school. So basically, if the red line is higher, that means that the, that school, the substitute fill rate has improved. If the blue line is higher, that means that it hasn't. So that's, you could probably spend more time looking at that, but that's really just the data for the two months, comparing '17 to '18 for the two months. Okay. And then the next few pages, there's the next four pages. What we did there was we said, okay, let's take a look at what sort of absences, why are the teachers out? So we went back into Cronos and took a look. And as, and we did this by school. So you can look at it by school, but I would suggest you move to the fourth page where it has total absences. And you can see in total, of all the absences, 18 percent were personal days, 62 percent were sick days. And then the other number that is more than 2 percent is professional days. So 10 percent of the absences were professional days. There's not a lot you can do about personal time and sick time. You know, people get sick. We have personal time in the contract. People have personal business they need to deal with. So assuming those are all kosher, you basically can look at the professional time, and you'll notice right below it, it's also a workshop. So 11 percent of the days that the teachers were out were for those two reasons. So maybe, maybe there's some value in looking at, could that be done on days other than school days? And I don't have any data on what the teachers were doing. That would probably take a lot more time, but just to give you a sense, you might have a little, little bit of play there. Okay. The next sheet, which has the, it's the fill rate by school. It's, it's got the graph on the bottom, and then it's got the colors across the top. So that shows the fill rate by school for September and October of '17, and September and October of '18. So you can kind of take a look, compare, let's say, bicentennial in September '18. I mean, '17 was 78 percent, and September of '18, it was 92 percent. October, it was 72 and 67. So that's a school that tends to do fairly well with the substitute coverage. But you can look down at some of the other schools, and you'll see those numbers aren't, aren't as nice as that. For example, I'll just pick one here, Dr. Crisp. It's 54 percent, 39 percent, 38 and 45. So they're not, they're not getting subs half the time. So that's putting a lot of stress on that school. Okay. Then we did a little study. I wouldn't say a study, but we gathered some data on what neighboring towns are paying. Now, this information was mostly received from websites. I had someone go to all the websites of the various schools, so assuming the websites are accurate, this is the number that's there. If they've made changes and not updated their website, that's a possibility. But as you can see, Nashua is on the low end of what we pay our sub-teachers. Basically, right now, it's 67. We've just implemented the loyalty program, which I'll get into in a minute, but for the most part, teachers have been getting paid substitute 67 a day. You can see Hudson's at 80, Manchester's at 70, Pelham's 75, Milford, Amherst, Wyndham, all at 75, Hollis is at 70 or 75. And there's also the rates for the paras also. So all in all, we're certainly on the bottom, the bottom 10 to 20 percent of what we're paying for subs. So the, flip to the next page. What if some of the things we've done in the last year to year and a half to try to improve the number of substitutes in our schools? We just started, in the last month or so, a loyalty program. So this year, when it, when a substitute works more than 20 days, instead of receiving $67, they're going to be receiving $77, which gets us closer to what most of our others, the school districts around here are paying. That is just being put in place now. So if any subs are listening to this, and you've worked more than 20 days, we'll catch you up. So they haven't received the money yet because we had to put a process in place. It's not that easy to do it this way, because we have to, we have to define who the people are, and then we got to pay them differently than we pay all the other subs. And since subs work at multiple schools, it's, it's kind of difficult to do. But we have a, we have a process in place to move forward with. Last year, at, at the high schools, we added permanent substitutes. So we hired basically two substitutes at each one of the high schools. I think some of them ended up becoming teachers or moving off into other roles, but we did hire that. The advantage to those substitutes is they do get medical coverage, which, there's some numbers here show what the annual cost is. So we did that. And like I said, the people, I think a couple of the people stayed the whole time, a couple of the others sort of came and left. So we didn't have full coverage all year long like we thought we might. We also increased for paras that would substitute in the intensive needs programs. We moved that rate up to $11 an hour versus the instructional paras, which are $9.57. As most people would know, that's, that's a tough gig working in some of those programs, especially for people that aren't really trained. Another note, if you're, a lot of times in the, in the elementary schools at least, paras end up having to take over the class for the teacher. When they do that, they get an extra $38 a day for that. That's, that's in the contract. And the other thing, we have long-term substitutes. So we used to pay them at the rate of $67 a day, and then we would bump it up after their 20th day. But a lot of these long-term, long-term substitutes, it would maybe be for 25 or a 30-day period, or a 40-day period. So they had to do a lot of work the first 20 days at only $67. So we sort of changed that around, and now we pay them 125 for the first 20 days, and then we pay 175 after that. Basically, when you do the math, they end up with about the same amount of money that they would receive over, let's say, 50 days. It's just spread out a little more evenly. So those are a few of the things we've tried to do. Have they all worked? Probably not, but a few attempts. So the next, the next sheet, which has FY '18 up at the top, I just ran a few scenarios as far as what would it cost to do certain things. So basically, in fiscal year '18, we needed 8,299 substitutes. We ended up with 5,360 of them. So at $67 a day, that's $359,000. That was the cost for substitutes. Those are just the daily substitutes, not the long-term subs. So then I said, okay, assume that we increase that to $77 a day as opposed to 67. That would increase the budget by 53,000. So if that's all we wanted to do, is say, we're moving it from 67 to 77, we assume the same amount of subs will show up. It's not going to make much of a difference. The cost would be 53,000. So then I said, okay, let's, let's assume that with the, the increase, we would also increase our fill rate, which is what you'd want to do. If you're going to pay more money, hopefully you're going to get more subs, but that's going to cost you more money, because there's going to be more subs coming in, which is what you want, but you're going to have to pay out more dollars for that. So assuming a 10 percent increase in the fill rate, if we paid them $10 more, which I wouldn't, to be honest with you, I don't think it's going to go up that high, but if it was, that would be $107,000, that the increase in the budget. And then I just ran a couple other scenarios. I said, okay, let's, let's move it up to $87 a day. So move it from 67 to 87. Assume the fill rate would go to 75 percent. Do the same thing, $95 a day, and assume it would go to an 85 percent fill rate. You can see the increases there. So $87 a day with a 75 percent fill rate would cost you $181,000, $182,000. And if you could get to an 85 percent fill rate at $95, that's $310,000. So you're talking a fairly significant sum there. But, so I just wanted to throw some of those numbers out, because I think as we go forward in the budget, these are some of the things people are going to talk about. I'm sure you've probably heard, Ms. Porter, at some of the meetings you've been to on the strategic plan and things. I'm sure teachers have brought this up. So this is just trying to put some numbers around some costs. Okay. And then the next, next page is, yes, so it's, gives you some data, the last two school, last two full school, school years, the '16-'17 school year and the '17-'18 school year. You can see what our fill rates were. So in '16, we were getting fill rates in the, you know, 70s for the most part, between 75 and 80 percent. And then you, you start to see in the calendar year, the beginning of 2017, you, you can see the drop right in there, where the fill rates start dropping, 62, 56, 61, 67. Then last school year, it peaked, kicked up a little bit in September, and then backed down again in October. And then you can see that most of last year, other than the month of June, was in the 60s, or maybe even 50s. So that's been kind of the, the struggle. But you can, you can see the trend. And if you flip that page over, then you can see that for last year, that's the, the fill rates by school. And some of the schools, you know, Birch Hill was as high as 85 percent last year, but some of the other schools were down 40 percent, 35 percent, 46 percent. So you can, you can just take a look and see by school what they all are. And then the last piece of data here was we took a look, because we've been having sub fears, we've been trying to add as many subs as possible. So if you take a look at that last page, you'll see, there's a list here put together by Dana O'Gara. She's got subs not working, subs working, total subs. Well, we have a lot more subs than we used to have, but the reality is, look at what the sub's working. Subs working has stayed about the same. You know, we had 92 in '15, we had 123 in '16, dropped down to 99, and this year, it's 105. So for the most part, we're trying to fill all these absences with about 100 people. And with 8,000 absences, 100 people are just not really working out. And some of those 100 people don't work that many days. We're projecting there's probably about a third of those people that are going to work well over the 20 days and make the extra money, but there's probably about, you know, there's at least half of those people that may not even reach that 20 days. Now, will the people that reach the 20 days work more days? That's, that's kind of the hope of the loyalty program. And, you know, we'll see how that goes during the year. So this problem that we're having is, is, is not a problem just in Nashua. It's not a problem just in New Hampshire. It's, it's throughout the whole, the whole country. I get a lot of educational emails and things, and they talk all the time about the cover, the difficulty in getting substitute teachers. You know, and a lot of that, the economy's a lot better. I mean, the reality of this, for the most part, is a part-time job, and some people that maybe used to have to work part-time now can find a full-time job. And maybe some of the people that still want to work part-time or need to work part-time, there's, there's probably some other options for them. So I, I think it's generally the economy which is pushing this, but that doesn't change the fact that we have fewer people in the classroom than we'd like. So I'm going to switch this over now to Rachel to talk about some ideas that they had when it, when it comes to substitutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Guarino. Will we have a chance to ask you some questions, certainly after the presentation?
Not at this time. Afterwards, please.
That's what I asked.
Well, okay. Can you please maintain decorum?
Oh, sure, I will.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Lively. You have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan covered a lot of what we covered in our presentation. So the first half of this presentation, I'm going to kind of breeze through just a lot of it and tell you what we did, rather than all the information there, because I think that a lot of the data that Mr. Donovan just put together covers a lot of that. My data is, this presentation was put on last April, so it is a little bit behind number-wise. I don't have any data from this year, so I'm sorry that mine's not up to date, but I haven't looked at this, or we haven't updated it in the past six months or so. So Kelly La Mountain and my goal was to identify the problem with the substitutes and why we have one, how do we compare to communities, and that's a lot of what Mr. Donovan covered with the loyalty program and the comparative rates. And then what are maybe some more longer-term resolutions to this problem? So obviously, identifying the problem, we polled our teachers and asked them if they thought there was a high school substitute crisis. 99.2 percent. We had one teacher who said no. Everybody else said yes. I'm not sure who that teacher was. Maybe they're never out, but even as someone who's not out often, I feel like we have one. So just a couple of questions we asked. You don't have to look at all this. I'm happy to share this with you if you want it, but, you know, have you ever come into school because you were sick, because you were concerned about not having a sub? Majority said yes. Have you ever scheduled an absence and not had it filled by the day that you were actually out? Three out of four teachers, 75 percent about, said yes. Have you ever had a substitute drop your fill before the absence? Again, about three-quarters said yes. Have you ever returned to school to learn that the substitute was pulled from your class, and your class was moved to the auditorium, the cafeteria? Again, about 70 percent said yes. So overall, as you can see, it's pretty universal that we felt at the high school level, there was a huge impact upon academics for the, with the substitute issue. This is just on a scale of 1 to 10. The first one talks about, excuse me, 1 to 5. First one talks about how important is the work that you leave, and most people leave it in the three or four categories, so they feel it's important enough to the curriculum, but it's not so critical that the teacher can't be there. The bottom one on a scale of 1 to 5, how sure are you that it's going to be done? And you'll notice the majority believe it's not going to be done when they come back. So it's really a lost education day. What is the effectiveness of administration? So we put this up here not because we believe our administration is ineffective, but we feel that administration is forced to cover absences, and therefore can't do their job in the building because they are too busy watching classes that we don't have substitute coverage for. And a lot of people in the building, about 50 percent, feel like it's extremely impactful to the point where it affects daily effectiveness as a whole. So the surveys, we surveyed high school subs, we surveyed teachers as well. I'm not going to go through a lot of this, but they just ranked what was important to them, what were some of their greatest challenges and things like that. The survey results, we were actually surprised, distance of-
Go back to your previous-
I'm sorry. Yeah, I apologize.
Cover that on the right.
On the right. It's just, we asked them to rank these things in importance. So benefits, student behavior, consistency of schedule, distance of travel, start and end times, and pay rate. We had anticipated seeing pay rate being the highest concern, or student behavior at the high school level. Sometimes they're forced to deal with behaviors that they may not have to be, deal with at the lower level, or, I should say, different types of behaviors. And we were actually surprised, are you okay if I turn this?
Turn it more.
Oh, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure you, you get all the information you need. Oh, no problem. So we were actually surprised to see distance of travel was really high. Most of our subs come from our community, and we feel like that's really important. But we weren't surprised to see student behavior and consistency of schedule were, were high. The fact that substitutes sign up for a class to come in to find they're either pulled, or they're covering multiple classes, or they're traveling across the building because during the prep for one teacher, they're needed in another classroom, just because we have such a shortage. One teacher said to us that the pay rate, while it wasn't high on their list, it's kind of that straw that broke the camel's back. That on top of all these other issues kind of made it not as beneficial to them to come here. And then most of the teachers said, or, excuse me, most of the substitutes said, of the high school level, they sub at the high school level. They like the level they're at. And then a lot of them wanted the benefits, or wanted to consider the option of the benefits. But it wasn't as highly rated as some of those other things. So these are just some quotes from the teacher, from the substitutes for the teacher's retention. You'll notice keywords kind of bolded. Knew who we were substituting for, rate of pay, respect, afraid to discipline, they wish they had recognition and appreciation. And a lot of subs said, I prefer to sub in Nashua. I love Nashua. I live in Nashua. I want to work for Nashua. They just wish it was a little bit easier or more cohesive. Public opinion, we took, we went through board notes, and we took a quote from the boards that, from a parent of a high school student who said that he felt like when these substitutes, we don't have enough substitutes, and students are put in the auditorium, that there's no education taking place. And for myself and for Kelly, that was the most important thing for us, that education continues to take place when we are not here as teachers. And then we obviously went through the board minutes, and when we went with Mr. Donovan, these are some of the numbers he gave to us. So we had about a 66 percent fill rate at the high school level overall for two-thirds of the year. So from, oh, would that be August until, I believe, we met with you in March, I think, at this point. So that's where this information was coming from. So, or, I'm sorry, that's at the end of February. So this next section is really what Mr. Donovan has already done for you. It's just the rates of the communities around us. And we also looked at benefits. We felt like benefits played a good part. So a lot of surrounding communities will pay for, more for experience, or more for a teacher license, or they'll pay for subs to have some sort of training before they get into the classroom. So either we're better preparing our subs, or we're compensating for subs who have some sort of education background. And then the loyalty program, which I know we just instituted, was something that last April, we had kind of talked about instituting it, and I'm glad to see that we have. So, and these are just two communities that do the loyalty program at different levels. And you'll notice they have a certified and non-certified area of pay. Here it is. So again, this is just how the loyalty program worked. Highest level of CONVAL retirees and subjects. So this was, forgive me, this was Kelly's area of expertise when we did the presentation, so I must not as familiar with this information. But this is just, I think, oh, CONVAL School District went all the way up to $90 a day at one point for their subs. And they get a pay rate increase on Mondays and Fridays, is what this says. So they get $20 more if it's a Monday or Friday, because that is our most absences for teachers, and it's also our most need for substitute teachers. So that's just how CONVAL addressed that issue. So what is our call to action? This is pretty much what I just talked about, raising our, our rate, which we already did do, raising, creating that loyalty program. And then this is kind of what I'm here to talk to you about. What if there were no substitutes at the high school level? What would be a better way to address this? And this is something I spent a lot of time researching, because I believe really strongly in it. So Lexington, Massachusetts, just 30 minutes south of here at the bottom of Route 3, created a independent digital learning community, or center, excuse me. So in 2016, their superintendent, Robert Harris, said, you know what? We're going to get rid of all high school substitutes. So not getting rid of the substitutes altogether, but those substitutes are now available to work at the lower levels. And in the high school, they're going to create a digital learning environment. So the purpose was that students at the high school level now begin to take education into their own hands. So it's teaching students a skill, and it's compensating for not having a substitute in the classroom by creating a more independently-driven learning environment. So there, it was a library of digital tools that were created. They created a digital environment, as in, they did spend some money upfront that first year, they did take a little bit of a hit, but then in the following years, they were able to actually save money. They hired a licensed teacher to cover absences. So all the students that did not have a teacher went into the same room, but they had anywhere from 60 to 90 students in one room. And they would have a single licensed teacher in that room every day. So just like we have one teacher in front of, in charge of our ACE program every day for our students that are in the ACE program, they would have one licensed teacher in this classroom to oversee these classes. And students would work collaboratively with that teacher to engage in independent learning. So how did they do that, or why did they do that? James Borden, who was the electronic learning facilitator at Lexington, said the purpose was, if you are a teacher and you're out on day 100, we want the curriculum to run as if day 100- James Borden, who was the electronic learning facilitator at Lexington, said the purpose was, if you are a teacher and you're out on day one hundred, we want the curriculum to run as if day one hundred was already still happening. So when you return on day one oh one, you can continue to teach your day one oh one lesson, rather than going backwards to day one hundred. And you'll notice this was really stuck out to me, because if you look back at the previous information, teachers felt like work wasn't getting done, they weren't here. And so that was something that really stood out to me, that teachers want work to be done, but it's not getting done, well, this is a way that it can continue to be done. So the results they found were actually astounding. Almost immediately, students took learning into their own hands, and the accountability for their education skyrocketed, they were surprised at how active students were right off the bat to get involved. This is Mr. Harris, the superintendent, or assistant superintendent, excuse me, and a picture of the actual classroom there. So it doesn't have to be a traditional classroom setting, any sort of setting would work for this. So cost-saving benefits, in Lexington, these are Lexington's numbers. In the previous years, they had spent about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on per diem substitutes at the high school level. That next year, when they switched over to this digital classroom, they spent fifty-two thousand on a certified teacher, so this teacher did fall under the teacher contract, plus benefits. And they spent thirty thousand dollars as a startup cost on Chromebooks and carts, and on top of that, they had a little bit more to spend on desks and furniture and things, but those were costs they didn't have to spend every year. But they did find they saved time on administrative costs for recruitment and training and scheduling. And they also found that their administration within their actual high school building had less stress of trying to coordinate where subs were going, where teachers were going, were classes covered, because they knew that the students knew where they were supposed to be. So the purpose of the pilot when it began was to improve student ownership and create a better collaboration between teachers and substitutes, or in this case, the elf. So that curriculum was not disrupted, and rather there was this sort of correlation between students and those facilitating their learning, even if it's not the same educator they usually have on a daily basis. What they did find was that accountability was possible through Google Classroom, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But I use Google Classroom, I personally love it, because you can put due dates on there, and you can actually put exact times, so like, if my class ends at ten oh four, I can type in ten oh four. And that way I can see who did it in class versus who turned it in late, and it still allows the students to submit, but it gives them accountability of was it on time or not. So I don't have to be present to know if they did something on time, or in class. And teachers actually began to integrate Google Classroom and online learning more in their regular classroom, on top of what was used for when they were out. And then all of a sudden, they had this unexpected benefit of these resources for new teachers or other teachers to share of all these online lessons that they hadn't had access to, because now teachers are already uploading them for the students, the teachers are now able to share them with each other. So that was kind of an unexpected benefit for them. Okay, so comparatively, I'm sorry, I don't know why the slides aren't quite lining up correctly, but comparatively, Lexington is about the third of the size of both of our high schools together. So I tried to run some numbers ratio-wise to see if it would fit the same. So they have about eleven hundred, a little over eleven hundred students, where we have thirty, closer to thirty-five hundred. They have seventy-three teachers, where we have two-hundred-and-fifty-six between both schools. One of the things Massachusetts does different in education is they don't have the tech school in the high school, they have separate tech schools, so I don't know how that would play into this, it wasn't something I had thought about at the time. So, well, they had classes like arts and lang, music and different classes like that, they didn't have shops in that high school, Lexington has a separate tech school in Lexington itself. So on a yearly basis, they were spending about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on subs. We, as of right now, spend, or as of last year, spend about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand on high school subs only. If we were fully funding and actually filling every position, we'd be spending closer to two-hundred thousand dollars on subs. And that's if we actually were able to fill a hundred percent of those positions. So the ratio of students to supplies that they bought, we did, they bought sixty computers for all of their students, so we took that ratio, and we almost tripled it to make it a similar ratio. I had a math teacher help me with the numbers, I'm not great with math, I teach English. But we came up to about a hundred and eighty Chromebooks is what you would need to, between the two high schools, so about ninety at each high school, to create a classroom like this. I priced it out for both the eleven-inch Chromebooks and the fourteen-inch Chromebooks, depending on what, maybe you wanted to split them, maybe you wanted to do one or the other, and six Chromebook carts, so three for each school. And total supplies for electronic classrooms would be about forty-four thousand, so that is a lot to start with upfront, that's, that's putting quite a bit of money upfront. But what you wouldn't have to do is put that money up every year. And then we put about, we put in, I believe this is what Central Office uses as their average number when they go to add a new teacher, this is what the number they use for what you would assume you'd spend on a teacher. And so two teachers at that cost plus benefits. And we also looked at the DOE for average salaries as well. So our goal here was to look at possibly freeing up some high school substitutes for other schools, because I know that some other schools need subs as well, but also creating an environment where education continued regardless of who's leading the class. And so this is just kind of our end slide, baby steps, is, is a lot of the stuff we actually have already done, and then the big changes was considering this change within the high school level. So, and then these are our sources. Any questions? I know that was a lot of information.
Thank you, Ms. Lively.
You're welcome, I'm sorry, I know that was a lot.
That's, that's quite all right. What I'm going to do is I'm going to go to the board, to the members of the committee, I'm going to start with Mr. Mosher. Do you have any comments or questions, Mr. Mosher?
At the moment, I don't have any, anything in particular, my mind has been working on ways to solve the, the problem of, of substitutes. But I keep getting, there's information in my head that if there is a question, the category of teachers, substitutes, that are more in demand would be either math or, or science, or some other.
Maybe Mr. Donovan or Ms. Lively can take that question?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that, I mean, I would guess that if you were looking for a high-level math teacher at the high school, you're probably not going to find a sub who could compare to a teacher. But I don't think we'd expect the sub to do that level of work anyway. But I don't, I, I think we're, the subs, the need for subs at, at all, all courses and all levels, not, not just the, the math or science. It's harder to find teachers that are math and science, there aren't as many. But I don't, I don't know about the subs.
I have in mind one of the reasons possibly why that they might be more in demand in, you know, the public sector, rather than working as subs, because the, the recognition and the pay and the benefits may be quite a bit higher for that particular classification of teacher. But I don't have a, you know, any statistics in front of me that would, you know, elaborate on that or confirm it. So I wonder if there was any other information that was available that would make a comparison to, you know, the math and science teachers as compared to others that would be working as substitutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher, that, that is actually a very good question, because I think it, it is presumed, and I assumed, or assumed that the same thing that you assume, which is that people in, in certain sectors are more in demand, so it's, it's harder to get those teachers. But I don't, I don't know of any studies that have ever been done on it. I know personal experiences where math experts that I know, who have been public school teachers, that actually left teaching and went into the private sector to make a lot more money and better benefits, I've seen it, but those are anecdotal. But it, but that's, seems to be the, the general perception out there, which is what you, what you articulated. Anyone else, Ms. Porter, do you have any questions?
Questions and comments? I love this, I love creative thinking outside the box, a way to solve this, this sounds perfectly tailored to a high school student. I mean, obviously you couldn't do this in elementary school, but the fix shouldn't be the same at all levels. So I think this is great, I can, I can see this working with high school students. My only concerns are just to be sure we have enough technology support, because if the computers are down and you have, you have all those kids in that room, that's a big problem. So you'd need a plan B, obviously, with that, and I would imagine that these teachers that you're hiring would have to be highly skilled in Google Classroom, just for troubleshooting, because, you know, and just in using the Chromebooks, because they can be a little finicky sometimes, even if they're brand-new. So hopefully there would be a few extra ones in there, just in case a couple of them go on the fritz. But I, I think this is something to really look into seriously. Did you ask the high school teachers how they feel about this option?
So I, excuse me, so I ran this idea by, obviously, some teachers that I work with more consistently than others. And they seemed really encouraged by the idea of having a licensed teacher in front of the kids. They were concerned, and have fair concern, about how many kids are you putting in a room, where are we going to put them? But I think that in thinking about it, we could find solutions for those. I think that if teachers are willing to do this, and it seems like they are, we can make it work. It's just, you know, putting the time in to think about it, I can't solve, we can't solve those problems until we know that it's even a feasible option. But I think that there is this idea of loving that kids should be in charge of their own education. We feel like we find a lot in high school that there is this need to teach independency, and we thought this might be a great way to, to both integrate that while ensuring education continued.
So what would you do in the case of a teacher who was going to be out for a week?
So week might, it might be different, it depends.
And the teacher doesn't always know, if you have the flu-
Right, well, I guess if it would be unexpected, I would assume that the class would still continue to go to this. If it was something that maybe like, oh, you know what, I need a ten-day leave, I'm having a minor surgery, minor FMLA or whatever, that might be something where you coordinate, I'm having the same sub come into the same classroom every day. Because that is, another issue we had is when teachers would go out for minor things like that, they'd be out for a week or two, for whatever reason, they'd get inconsistent subs. So something like this could allow for a consistent sub to stay in a different classroom at that point.
So you'd have different scenarios.
Oh, yeah, there would be different ways to address that.
There's a lot of nuts and bolts to go-
Yeah, there is a lot of nuts and bolts with this, but the nice thing is to know that, like, as a teacher for me, and I, I'm sure you remember this, is like, I, when I'm out, if my kids are sick, I get up, I come into school, I do all of my prep work, and then I drive back home to watch my children, and this, I can post it online from my house, you know, and not having to get someone to watch my kids for an hour to come into school to prep to then go home. So just the convenience of knowing my kids are, my kids at school are still learning while my kids at home are taking care of them.
And if they're used to using Google Classroom already, that it's nothing different, they're doing-
Yeah, and I know every freshman in high school takes freshman writing, and every student that takes freshman writing uses Google in some form, whether it's the docs, or the slides, or the classroom. So they have an account, they've been into it from day one, they know how to get in and use it, so.
Right, and the, and there's, there's accountability for the kids, so you know when you're out, who's doing their work and who's not, and so, yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah, for me personally, I would use Google Classroom more if this was set up, because I would, I would already be using it in my classroom, and then the kids would know automatically already where to go.
Right. Nice work, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to thank you for this presentation, I learned, I learned a lot from it. One of the things that I am surprised at is that teachers don't have a lot of confidence in substitutes getting their lessons done, or, but I also learned that better preparation for absences, sort of a seamless, you know, absence helps. And, and I, and I think it, I think there are some good ideas using the electronic classroom, however, I'm old-fashioned, I like human, I like human interaction. And I, and I'm very skeptical of, of electronic learning. I think that some students may not have the maturity to, to, to do that on their own, some do, it, it's, it's very, it's very, you know, because, because of personality of kids, every kid is different. You know, so I think maybe on a trial basis, or, or maybe, maybe a combination of, of both would be good. And it also may be something where, where regular teachers, if you have a group of substitutes that are constantly, you know, if you raise the price a little bit, you have, you know, twenty-day substitutes, they like coming, coming to your school, maybe more interaction with the regular teachers. So they have that seamless, they, they have more confidence in them getting their lessons done, something like that, too, more, more communication in, in that way, you know? And, and the other point was that maybe, maybe a few more benefits for, for those substitute teachers that are licensed, maybe give them preference. So, so there's a lot of good, a lot of good information there, so.
I, I would just like to add, you make a good point, but I do want to say it's, it's not the teacher's lack of confidence in the substitutes that we can't get them done, I do want to stress that we are very appreciative of our subs. I think that the inconsistency with subs being able to be in the same room, or other things play a role in there, whether it's students knowing that their sub could be pulled, and so they're not going to do the work. So I, I do want to stress that we, we love our subs, please keep subbing, please keep coming to-
Well, I, I worded my, I worded it very carefully, I said they don't have a lot of confidence in, in the subs getting their lessons done, so. It's about, it's about getting that lesson, about that consistency, you know? And I, and I think that maybe if there were more interaction between the subs and the regular teachers, that they, that, that would, there would be more, what you have is the seamless absences, you know? And, and I think maybe something like that, so I wasn't insinuating that about anybody, so. Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So I actually have credibility as substitute teacher in Nashua School District. I had my briefing by Mr. Fredrickson when he was the assistant principal over at Elm Street, to give you an idea how long ago that was. I did some classes here at the high schools, it was a horrible experience. I chose the middle schools, because I felt as though I needed the height advantage, and I think you know what I mean when I say that. I think you've got a very innovative approach as a sub, and I substitute, I can't sub in the district now because I'm on the board. But last year I did substitute in Merrimack, and it was the high school, so I was completely surprised that I went back to the high school to do it. I do want to make a couple of comments. I know you've, obviously as a high school teacher, that's where your focus has been. From my experience in the middle school, I wouldn't be surprised if you could do this in the, sorry, in the eighth grade. I, I think the level of technology, knowledge that the kids have, we have no clue. They hide it very well on their phone, if they really wanted to, they could apply it to a computer. I think you could drive this down to eighth, I don't know about seventh, I'm not going to go there, but I think you could introduce it into the middle schools as well. I think benefits, I mean, if you look at Mr. Donovan's slide for the two permanent subs, the, the benefit cost to the employees over two thousand dollars. I earned about four thousand dollars as a sub last year in Merrimack, I got my twenty-day bonus, so that's four thousand, most people aren't going to work, some will work more, but, and some people might just work for the benefits, okay, and that's an option. One of the things I suggested in the past was, I think if you could book a sub for two or three, if they could rely, this goes back to your point about scheduling. If they could rely on several days a week, gee, I can plan Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm going to sub, I can do my thing on the other days. And if, I know there's also, Mr. Donovan, you might know the answer, there's a certain, they can only, subs can only work a maximum num, I don't know if it's days, I don't know if it's hours, or whatever, but there's a limit on how much a sub could work in a, is it a week, or is it a month? It's an accounting thing.
Yeah, well, it's Obamacare thing.
Right.
It's, so they, we, we have the system set up, so they, they're not, they can't work more than four out of five days.
Okay.
But we can always, if we want someone to come for two straight weeks, we can uncheck the box and they can work the whole time.
Okay, so if, as a substitute teacher, if I know I have a four, if I know I'm coming to North for four days, I can plan my life around that? I mean, I know A-SO-P gives you the ability to- I mean, I know A-Sub gives you the ability to pick your classes and people have certain preferences. But quite frankly, you may or may not realize this, but like Mr. Fredrickson said to me, you're there as an adult in the room to make sure the kids are safe and make sure that the building is safe, essentially. And if you get a lesson done, that's gravy. Now, I can tell you, like I said, I really didn't like the high school thing. I had bad experiences with some of the kids. But the middle school was quite different. But I would tell you that a lot of times, half, maybe, half the time, here's a word search, you know, there was no real lesson. And that might go to the teacher thinking, well, if, I only have to do it over anyway when I get here. And there is no training for substitute teachers. We talked about it last year. Dana presented us with a training plan. I think it was done once. But subject matter, training, no. We don't even get, or at least, even in Merrimack, I'll say this. They don't even review with you where the fire exits are, where you, and they have a comp, they, you don't go with the homeroom. The kids go to a place and it's very weird. So I followed a kid that was in the class, because I knew he was coming back. And we went to the, I went to the total wrong place as a teacher to cover. So even the fire drills, and I would say, I don't know if the district does this, it would be helpful for the substitutes to know the fire exits and what classes they're going to cover if they go back to their home, their home, I'll say homeroom, show my age. But I think you know what I mean. I think the scheduling piece is if you can give subs something they can rely on, they'd be more inclined to do it. And you hit on student behavior. It's not often discussed. But every class is different. Some of them play the game, sync the sub. I can't tell you how many times, it's like a tag-team wrestling match with sharpening a pencil, particularly in the middle school. One kid will come up, he'll grind a brand-new pencil into a stub, totally to disrupt the class. And then as soon as he's done, he's either got to go to the bathroom or get a drink of water. And then there's the second and the third kid who've got, they've got, they go just as far as they can go. So that's just the game that's played. Now, I don't know how you address that until the kids have some respect. I would certainly support a proposal if we saw this. I think it's necessary. I think we have to integrate not only the phones. I think we really have to figure out how to integrate the phones into the classroom. First of all, we don't have to buy them. The kids have the technology. We've invested in the endpoints. The network in the school is pretty, pretty robust. But would you do it in both high schools? Would you, how would you implement it? Did you guys give any consideration to that?
So we priced it for both high schools, so this price is for both high schools. You would get 90 Chromebooks and three carts in each high school. You'd get a teacher in each high school. The only thing we didn't price in here is obviously if you need to refurb a room or change a setting or something like that. But ideally, we would do it at both high schools if we need to test-run it at one high school. I know last year, we hired a couple full-time subs. I think that that was a great first step. I wish we could take it further and hire a full-time licensed teacher. I think that makes a huge difference. I don't know, if you guys are familiar with the ACE program at the high school levels, it's what used to be in-school suspension, so it's, I'm not 100% sure what ACE stands for, forgive me. But it is a academic, the students do their academics in one room without moving. And we have a licensed teacher that covers that. And the way the students treat that teacher is equal to the way they treat every other teacher. And I think that that respect, that behavior change, comes with the fact that knowing that this is a permanent figure in the building and that they are supported by their staff. And as much as we try to support our subs, different blocks, never mind different days, there's people in each room. And, you know, I try to check them, we all have sub buddies. I try to check on my sub buddy when they're out. But I may not get there every block because I have my own blocks. And so just that, my hope is to create that consistency to address the behavior issues that you kind of mentioned. I think you are right that technology is here and it's staying here. And that as much as I am a paper person, too, I completely love hard copy form. Kids are going to go to college, hopefully, or into the tech world, or into any sort of skilled trade world. It's all electronic now, and they need to be familiar and comfortable with it. And learn, if they're not comfortable with it, how to fix it on their own. And I think that this is kind of one of the ways that teaches that. So on top of the academic benefits, it's also got this sort of real-world application. Ideally, putting it in both high schools would be universal. I believe that, and I don't know for 100%, but I believe both high schools have to be the same. Is that correct, in my understanding, that everything has to be the same in both high schools?
What was that?
I believe everything has to be the same in both high schools. I don't, is that correct? That like, if you have it in one high school, you have to have it in the other? From what I understand, I don't, I don't, I've been here four years. I don't know everything.
That's all right.
Can I maybe take a crack at that? We have different CTE programs in each school, but collectively, the district offers it.
Right.
So.
Right, but I think like, if we teach an English class here, it has to be offered at the other high school, if I understand.
But this is substitute teaching.
Right, but it's a licensed teacher. I think we have an ACE program at both schools, right? We don't ship our ACE students from one school to the next.
We also have students that, that go between the high schools.
Right.
So that's how they receive, probably create parity.
Yeah.
In that sense, too.
So I mean, I, I don't know if we can test it at one high school. That would be kind of maybe the better way to start it. And then you're breaking up that initial cost as well over maybe two years. But ideally, if you're looking at these numbers, you're spending about $150,000 that first year. And that is just over what we spend on daily subs and less than what we would be spending if we could cover every class. So, and then after that, you're only spending about the $100,000, I can't do math, $20,000 for the teachers.
Ms. Porter?
Do we budget for full funding for substitutes? Like, do you budget for 100% coverage?
No.
What do you budget for?
I, I don't do it on a percentage basis. I do it based on a numerical basis. So I could figure that out for you. I don't.
So is this in line, out of line with what would already be budgeted?
I'd have, I'd have to check the numbers. I mean.
It might be, right?
Yeah, I mean, it may not be as far off as, I mean, I'll certainly take a look at it as part of this year's budget.
It could be feasible economically, I mean, except for the startup cost for maybe for.
Yeah, I think the startup would be outside.
Right.
But going forward, and I mean, the key is, in the long run, is it more effective, right? I mean, that's really what we're looking at.
I think it has a lot of possibility, yeah.
Even if you break even every year, but the kids are learning more when the teachers are out, I mean, that's, that's a win.
Does anyone else have any more questions or comments, or Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, yeah, back to the questions, not about your presentation, but about Mr. Donovan's data. The annual cost for the permanent subs. So it costs the district, in addition to the out-of-pocket for the coverage, I guess it doesn't cost the district, comes out of the city's pot in terms of the benefits that are paid? Or do we have to reimburse the city that $2,000?
Any benefit is, yeah, it's not in the budget that's approved by the board, but it's in our school budget.
Okay, so that's paid for by the state. So you mentioned that some people were in, some people were out. Was, is that investment, is that $2,000 extra investment in the employee? Has it, did we get the coverage we wanted and spend $2,000 of? Would we have better spent that money on increasing the daily rate versus just offering this benefit? I'm just trying to figure it out if it's, personally, I don't think it is. But I'm just curious, based upon, you've had a whole, what, six months with these numbers, so.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Do you have a gut feeling?
I don't have a gut feeling, no. And I think when you're, when you're talking about the benefits, is it a family plan versus a single plan? But I think it's been single plans, it's, this isn't the type of job typically a family person's going to do unless one spouse is very well off on their income.
But you only offer the benefits to?
Just those two subs at each high school.
Right, so you're not talking, substitutes don't really get benefits, right?
No.
No, okay.
Because you have to work a minimum of so many.
Right, right.
The only, the only way you'd pay it, a substitute a benefit, if they guaranteed that they'd work five days a week for an extended period of time. Then that's a long-term sub. The numbers we're talking about here, there's also other costs that are long-term subs that aren't in the numbers we're talking about. These are the daily subs. The long-term subs that step in, when let's say a teacher has a child or is out for an extended period, that's a long-term sub. They get paid that higher amount. That's not included in these numbers, or dollars. That, that would be above and beyond that.
Okay. Just, Ms. Porter?
I'm wondering if you have any data on how often paras are being pulled to sub for teachers?
The only data would be we could look at how frequently paras are receiving the extra pay.
Because I think that, at least at elementary school, that has a huge impact on the whole school. When a para is pulled to sub, the kids that para usually works with don't have that person. And it would just be interesting to me to know, and I don't know how you could collect this, is how many times paras are being pulled? Are they special ed paras, instructional paras, ELL paras? Because once you're pulling, I don't know that special ed paras are being pulled, but that has IEP implications, you know, staying in compliance. So it would just be interesting, because the reason I'm asking is could it, could be extra data to support doing something else, like in, you know, an impact of.
You'd have to.
Pulling, I know this is happening a lot.
Yeah, you'd have to assign someone to collect that data, because I know.
I don't want to give you more work.
Like I said, we could maybe get something out of the, out of the system, because we could see, assuming, I'm pretty sure the case, we use a specific pay code for when we pay paras the extra money. So we could maybe get a download of that pay code, you could get a sense of what that is. Now, keep in mind, you know, some paras will cover for, you know, an hour or two. It's not necessarily a full day. It'd be easy to pick out the full-day ones. And then the reality of paras, most of our paras are at the elementary or middle schools, and most of them are special ed paras. You know, I think people feel that, oh, well, we have a lot of, we don't really have a lot of instructional paras. But those are probably the ones that are moved into the teacher slots.
And also Title I paras, people who are working in Title I tend to get pulled as well.
Yes, yes, those are the, because they're sort of instructional also.
Exactly. I guess I was thinking of them when I said that. But that's having a huge impact, because those Title I people are there to serve kids who have needs and they're subbing for gym class or music class or whatever.
Yeah, no, it's, it's true.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any more thoughts or questions regarding this?
I had thought about something that Howard had said before, but I didn't want to elaborate on it, because I didn't want people to think I was blowing my own horn.
Okay.
But I had agreed with him, you know, on the problem that he had faced with the high school students. And I can, I can, you know, associate with that because I was doing a lot of adult education. And if you think those kids are bad, you try some of the adults sometimes. And you'd be surprised.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mrs. Oden, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. You, I believe it was, Ms. Lively, in your slides up there, the most requested, the subpositions that most subs wanted was at the high school? Am I correct that I remember that?
We polled only the high school subs.
Oh, okay.
So they said they preferred the high school. We asked them what, if they, if they went to all schools. So we wanted to know who we were polling, if that was where they preferred to be or they were filling in because that was available. So the high school subs had said, we do like the high school level.
Okay.
But that they did sub in other schools. Most of them did actually not sub in other school districts, surprisingly.
Okay, because there is such a difference from teaching at the high school level and going into a first or second grade classroom. And I'm wondering, how many of those people might not want to sub at the elementary level that are subbing at the high school? I'm just wondering what the delta would be there.
Yeah, I think that initially, when we did the survey, we hadn't actually come across Lexington yet. My husband happens to work in Lexington, so that kind of came through the grapevine that way. But, so we didn't quite ask them if they'd be willing to work elsewhere. I think that, you know, we had talked about a couple of different scenarios, maybe where we would still need subs at the high school level, knowing that we had them available. But I think that these subs, especially the ones that took the survey, I can say, we've seen pretty consistently in the building. And so if they're that dedicated to subbing, I would like to believe, I don't speak for them, but I'd like to believe they would sub either at the middle school or the elementary school level or in some way want to be involved, because they are quite dedicated, the ones at the high school levels.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. So, Mr. Donovan, you hinted at, when you mentioned the budget preparations. So I guess I just want to get a read on what you're thinking about before I ask you anything, because I know your head's spinning on this, so. Do you think it's feasible to evaluate this proposal for both schools using the funding out of the existing daily substitute teacher rate to fund the two teachers that have been suggested? And then we have to find them, using, I mean, wages for wages is really what I'm thinking. Equipment would probably be a, I don't know, a different kind of discussion. I, I would love to see your analysis on that, if it's even feasible. So, but I don't know what you were thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I, we've just started with the budget, getting all these salaries in. So that's hopefully, by the end of this month, we'll have all the salary data in. That's sort of the base of the whole process. And then if this seems like something that people are interested in, it can be a, it can be an item. You know, whether it gets in the budget, that's sort of up to the superintendent. But I mean, I can, with the help that, that's here, it wouldn't be too difficult for me to, you know, verify these numbers and transfer them over. You know, I think some of the things are, you know, you're going to have to, would we be able to do it next year? You know, we'd have to get the buy-in at various levels of the high school, you know, the principals, et cetera. And, you know, I think, I think that maybe need a little more study before you do it. But I mean, I could certainly put some things together. I mean, this is one of our bigger issues, so certainly worth.
Would you need some action by the board, bringing it to a committee to request it? I mean, the board needs to move it forward, not a single request. So would you feel the need that the board should be informed about this proposal and bring it forward into the budgeting process? Because the Budget Committee is not going to meet, it's going to be too late if we wait for the Budget Committee to request it, you know?
Well, but I think it can be, whether it's actually in the budget or just outside the budget, it can be part of the budget process.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Lively. You have some support, I think, at the board. It'll be very interesting to see where it goes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Donovan and Ms. Lively. If there aren't any more comments or questions, I think we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. And that's the X2 discussion. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, so the X2 discussion was going to be with Mr. Farrakhan. Mr. Farrakhan's not here, so I, I am not ready to speak to. What I was hoping for was just to have an X2 discussion to, to get a sense, okay, what is X2? What does it do? What does it do well? What doesn't it do? I think there's some, some sense out there, people get confused about what X2 really is. I mean, it's a student information system. It has certain sets of qualities, that it does things very well, it doesn't do certain other things. But I wanted Mr. Farrakhan to come and explain that. He's not here, so why don't we move that? I'll move that to. He's not here, so why don't we move that, I'll move that to next month or the month after, when he can make it.
Sure, that sounds, that sounds good. And that would bring us to item three on the agenda, which is contracts.
Okay. The first two contracts, I will pass on, there's four contracts in here. So Mr. Smith will talk about the first two, and he did pass out to you a new memo, so that's what he'll be speaking to.
Okay, there's basically two contracts to discuss here. One contract and one purchase. So Siemens is one of our two control contractors for the HVAC systems. CTI has been the other one. CTI has the vast majority of the school districts. Siemens is in a smaller number of schools, primarily elementary schools. They are providing a proposed three-year contract, which seems to be in line with our past cost of doing business with them. There's a bump this year, because Sunset Heights is just beyond its warranty period from the renovation project. So this past year, the total was fourteen thousand and change, now it's supposed to go to almost seventeen. And I recommend we proceed with this.
Okay. I guess, so this is, you have equipment, I'm a little bit confused. There's equipment here, floor polishers, and is the, so that's a contract for custodial equipment? Is that what that is?
I'll get into that next.
Oh, that's a different one, okay.
On the cover memo, I had really two paragraphs. One was controls contract.
Okay, so the first one is for controls, okay.
I'll get into the...
So that's from Siemens, okay, I see. Three-year contract, okay, with Siemens. I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of us a little bit here. And that's for the HVAC controls maintenance?
Correct.
Okay, all right. For four elementary schools.
And just to add to that, I mean, this is Siemens equipment, so these are the people that need to service it. You can't send this out and have somebody else bid it, unless you're going to do some small, local guy. But it's really, you know, like Sean mentioned, CTI has the equipment at most of the other schools, so we have the contract with CTI. This is for the equipment that's Siemens equipment.
Okay.
Right, so the competition occurs when we do the renovation, basically. And we'll make the contract available to either CTI or Siemens. That keeps some competition going. To introduce more systems, it gets, makes it dicey for us, just having to learn the different methods of HVAC controls.
Can you, do you have a number for that controls contract? Do you have a cost for what the contract is? Am I missing it?
Yeah, it's on, in your first packet, I don't know, did you put it?
It's not in the second packet, I just handed it out.
Yeah, just in the, in the first packet, it's on the third page, I think. There's the three years.
I have a floor polisher.
Look in the package that came with your board package.
Oh, okay, the original package, okay, all right. I just wanted to, okay, I got it now. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that the cost is in, is in the, okay, I see. So it's, so these numbers, sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-seven, seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-six, and seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine, those are the costs for the three years?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure they go into the motion.
And I would note that that is well within our budgeted amount for this coming year.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Ms. Porter?
So how do we stand on, I know that having gone on all the tours with you of all the schools and looking at things, how is the HVAC at these four, at these schools? Is there climate control going well?
It's pretty good. So Sunset Heights was the most recent one, good to go in the Siemens contract, and we had some initial issues with it, but that's pretty much what you come to expect, come a shakedown. So that seems to be pretty well-controlled. The other schools, Amer Street was the last renovation before Sunset Heights, and then Bicentennial and Dr. Crisp were in the mid-nineties, basically just as I was arriving, those were wrapping up. So those are more rudimentary systems in those schools, just because they're older. As part of this last contract, we had them convert things to more of a graphics package, so we can actually see things in motion. But I'd say we haven't received many complaints from those schools out of the ordinary.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
No, not really. I was looking at this, yeah, I see the Siemens, this is not the trained equipment that we had purchased for Mount Pleasant. But I see the schools there involved, I know Siemens equipment's okay. They have dealt with a lot of their equipment.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? In that case, I will move to approve three-year contract with Siemens Industries for heating HVAC controls for four elementary schools. Year one, sixteen thousand nine hundred and forty-seven. Year two, seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty-six. And year three, seventeen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries three to zero. Mr. Smith?
Okay, I apologize for that. I didn't include the Siemens with a new memo, but I figured you already had that one. So custodial equipment, we're replacing floor burnishers for each of the two high schools. They're replacing burnishers that are no longer functioning. So for the North High School, we're looking to just purchase one, it's a riding floor polisher. It's actually, takes the place of three walk-behind burnishers. There are a couple of cut sheets attached to your package, new package, I'll just show pictures of it. And the cost for that is eleven thousand iron seventy-five. The South High School is looking to obtain two walk-behind burnishers, again, replacing two dead burnishers. Those come to a total of eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two and seventy-six cents. You might ask why a riding burnisher at one high school, not the other. We looked at actually getting riding for both high schools, but come to find out, the elevator size is actually different between the two high schools, and the riding burnisher would not fit into the South High Schools. So we, right, now there's no treads to climb on stairs or anything, right? So that's why the different approaches between two high schools. So funds exist in miscellaneous purchase line, which is listed in the memo, for both of these purchases, and I recommend we proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think that he explained it very well, because I had in my mind also about the elevator, but can't put a large piece of equipment in a small elevator. And also, that it may have a weight limit that maybe would be exceeded, so I'm all set.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Ms. Oden?
I have a question. This floor burnisher, the ride-on one, it's a lot faster. Are there times when other schools might be able to use them? Is it something that can be shared?
Yeah, not really. I mean, you have to consider the size of the school, each of the two high schools, so every single floor is not burnished every single night. They rotate amongst the different floors, the wings. So I wouldn't say, maybe in the summertime?
Okay.
You could share the resource, but during the school year itself, no.
Okay, thank you.
In that case, I move to approve a rider burnisher for Nashua High North for eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars, and two walk-behind burnishers for Nashua High South for eleven thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
Okay, on the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. The motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith. So that brings us, is that the end of contracts?
No, there are two more.
We have more contracts, okay. I will turn the floor to Mr. Donovan.
Okay, the third contract is a contract with Mr. Robert Lukasiak, I'm guessing. But basically, this is going to be paid for by a grant that we received for the CTE program, entitled Innovations for Mathematics Integration into the 21st Century CTE Programs. So basically, we've had a lot of CTE students struggle with the basic algebra and basic math courses. So what this is, is a way to use the CTE programs, like robotics and some of the other courses, so that they, students can earn the math credit, more hands-on, real-life type, using machining, manufacturing courses. So they're going to be looking to study to say, for example, can a geometry credit be earned by students enrolling in the machining course? So this is a two-year grant. So they're creating this study, they're going to, the pilot's going to be robot algebra, which I think I might like to try. So basically, it's a need for more hands-on ways to teach mathematics. And so this is something that the two CTE directors, Mr. McQuilkin and Ms. Bastoni, have been working on. We've got the grant. This is the individual, they chose to do this. This individual is well-trained, he used to be a math teacher. He's also working with other CTE centers in the state, which I think is key, because this is something we want to do statewide. So I suggest we approve the contract with Mr. Lukasiak for thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is for the full year.
What was that again, thirty-seven thousand?
Thirty-seven thousand.
When would this start?
I believe it's going to start very soon. He's already begun to work with some of the other programs, and done some preliminary work, so once the contract's approved, he can start working directly for Nashua.
Beautiful.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Mosher, or comments?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden?
No, I just want to say congratulations to our CTE program directors. I think this is a step in the right direction, and I think a lot of our students will benefit from this. So, you know, I, and to think we have a grant for it, good for our directors in moving forward with this.
I agree.
Okay, in that case, I am going to move to approve the contract for thirty-seven thousand dollars with Robert Lukasi, let me get this name correct, Lukasiak, to be funded with innovations for mathematics integration into 21st century CTE programs.
Second.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, we have one more contract, correct?
Yes. The final, the fourth of four contracts. This is for a contract with Elevation, and it's spelt E-L-L-Evation, because it's an ELL software. This is a piece of software that we, Mr. Chopo, working with the ELL teachers, last year was the first year they had it, this is for year two. When you look at the objective in the contract, it speaks to another module, so they had a grant, so the Collaborate Module, we've already approved that and paid for that. This is to approve year two of the contract, which will run this school year. And it also includes three thousand dollars for training.
And what is the total for the contract?
The total is thirteen thousand one fifteen.
Thirteen thousand one one five. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Porter, do you have a hand up?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mosher, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
I have a question. So this money is, was already budgeted in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe it's this, the ten thousand part of it is covered in the ELL grant.
And, okay, and, oh, it's in an ELL grant?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the second year, or second module, you said?
Yeah, well, there's, this is the second year of using the base module, that's what this contract is for, but there's also another module that we just added at the beginning of this year, called the Collaborate, the Collaborate Module. So now we will have two pieces, two modules of this elevation software, which the teachers will use on, with the ELL students.
So is this a yearly fee that's going to be going forward?
Yeah, I think if, if it's going to be going forward, typically what we do is we'll put it into the software budget going forward. But since last year was a test to see if it was going to be valuable, they decided they'd like to do it again.
People like it.
Yeah.
Good.
And those were ELL funds, you said?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And those are grants, are those federal grants?
I believe they are.
They're funneled through the state, probably.
Yeah, all our, all our federal funds funnel through the state.
Funnel through the state, okay. If anyone doesn't have any further questions or comments, I am going to move to approve the contract with Elevation Inc. for the second software module. And you can tell me if I'm incorrect, if I misspeak, Mr. Donovan. For thirteen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars to be funded with ELL grant funds.
Second.
And Ms. Porter's second, okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, our next item would be the fiscal 2019 October transfer report. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, we have about five or six transfers this month. The first one is the South High School, you saw the North High School one last month, this is for that counselor that wasn't in the budget, and then we couldn't afford to do it with our final funds. So this is just moving it to the right account, using their, their school funds. The second one is the curriculum department, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, simply moving seventeen thousand dollars from books to the computer software. That's for the teacher e-software that has been discussed a number of times, for the grading at the elementary school. So that's just moving from one account to another. The next one is, the next one is, we're down a psych. There was a psych that we thought we had this summer, and then something happened, and the person didn't... the person didn't come. They've been having a very difficult time finding a school psych. So this one and the next one are both, we're forced, we still have to provide the services to the students. So we're taking money from special ed tutoring and moving it in to the additional hours to pay for some fill-ins, some, some psychs that maybe work two days are going to work an extra day, so they'll, they'll help out. And the other one is, we're going to be using an outside person to help, but that's a per diem person, and they're more expensive than having your own staff. They don't get benefits and things, but the cost per hour is more expensive. So these two entries are simply moving the funds from salaries into the contracted services where they'll be actually spent. We're hoping that, you know, sometime during the year, we'll be able to hire this person. If not, then there'll probably be more transfers later in the year. Okay, the next one is a CTE entry. They're taking money from contracted service, from one contracted service line to another, really, but the, they have, the Perkins Grant had been paying for LNA, EMT, and CPR certifications. They no longer pay for it at a certain amount of time, so now we have to get it into the operating budget. So we're basically doing it in two pieces. So CTE's paying 10, and then I'm going to find $10,000 somewhere else. It's basically about $20,000 to run these programs. And the way the Perkins Grant works is they'll do it for three to four years, and then you're supposed to take it over after that. So this, this will be in the right place in this year's budget in 2020. And the last, is that the last one or the second last one is just a 2,000 entry? Led Street School has been working on their climate and culture, so they had some additional hours for some extra meetings that they've had, so they've had to pay the teachers for some of those meetings, and they've taken that out of the supply account. And the last one is just a transfer being made at the South High School, where they're taking it. They had school psychs at the high school come in and work a little bit in the summer to do some preparation work. They didn't spend all that money, so they had another, they had $1,200 left of that, so they're putting it into their supply account for now. And that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Are there any questions or comments regarding the transfer, October transfer report? Hearing none, I am going to move to approve fiscal year 2019 October transfer report.
Second.
On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero. Okay, our last item on the agenda is our fiscal 2019 October financial report. Mr. Donovan?
Okay, I'll run through this quickly, just sort of highlighting a few things. Wages, you'll notice for the month, it was 6.2 million. That's what it was last month. Both months included four weekly payrolls and two bi-weekly payrolls, so that's basically what the cost of those payrolls are, so 6.2. So that sort of gives you a comfort, comfort level. Overtime number was slightly higher this month than the last couple, and I think most of that bump is, is, some of it is due to the outside people coming in and using the auditoriums and things like that, because it was really Elm Street and the two high schools where the increase happened. So we receive monies from those. The cost for the, the original, the initial cost goes here, and then the monies come into a different account. We'll merge them all at the end of the year. But that's fine. The, the wages per diem line, I was taking a look at that and comparing it, that was about $25,000 higher than it's been most other months. And so I went back and took a look, and basically, if you recall, we had five assistant principals that we needed to replace. So the schools ran a little bit of the time without them, but then we went out and got all these experienced people. That cost about $25,000 bucks. So that helped the schools out. The reality, though, is they get paid higher than an assistant principal. Hopefully, if we didn't pay them as much, I didn't do the math to see exactly. It might have cost us a little bit more, but it shouldn't, we did have five positions open for a while, so it didn't cost us $25,000. It cost us less. But that's the bump up in that account. And then the retirement and separation pay, that's getting close to topped out, but as I said last month, all the teachers have been paid. Most of what's left here was sped director who left us at the end of August. So unless we have a, suddenly people continue to leave in the middle of the year, I'm hoping that won't happen. I'm hoping this account will simply just be people who leave vacation payouts for people who leave, and that shouldn't be teachers, it shouldn't be administrators, it might be, you know, maybe a custodian or a repairer or something. Okay, other than that, the other accounts were fine. Looking at property services, the electricity account, it's finally lower than it was this month last year. We're still running higher than we were last year. We're about $100,000 higher through four months than we were at the same time last year in electricity, but I'm hoping that, this is the first month that we saw that start to shrink. Heating gas, it'll be the next few months, but after tonight, it's probably going to start tomorrow. Hope it doesn't stay like this very long. But won't really be too concerned about that. Water's running sort of where we ran last year. It'll be $18,000 to $20,000 a month. If you look at the rentals line, you'll see there's a rather large sum there this month at $75,000. Basically, the Brentwood payment, we, we didn't pay July, August, September, October until this, we paid it all at once. There was some, some confusion back and forth about which account they wanted us to send it to. They didn't want a check, they wanted a wire, and then the numbers got kind of messed up, so. But now we're, it'll, you'll, we'll be paying it on a monthly basis through a wire, so we'll be all set. But that's why it was large this month. Telephone's running the same. I got a, hopefully, Mr. Ferencoff can help this decrease as we move forward. The other account that's pretty high in the other services is the postage and delivery, which is like $11,000 for one month in the middle of, sort of the beginning part of the year, but not, and, and basically what that was, was the four places that have postage machines, which are the two high schools, central office, and, what's the other one? And Elm Street. So our biggest schools, they have postage machines, those places have postage machines. All four of them decided to fill up the postage machine in one month. So it's like $10,000 there. That's $4,000 for one of the high schools, $2,000 central office, $2,000 another high school, $2,000. So the good thing about that is, shouldn't be filling it up for a long time. But what it tells me a little bit, I think, is maybe they snuck a little at the end of last year into their postage machine instead of, but what's done is done. I have learned. We'll see how that goes. Okay, and you'll notice the transportation services, there's sort of big numbers there. But last month, we hadn't received the, the big bills from First Student. So in the regular transportation, you see $751,000. The bulk of that is September and October. We pay, it's about 380, about $350,000 a month for the large buses that, that drive the kids to school. So that's two months there, and, and that number should go down by about $350,000 going forward. The sped transportation, only one month got caught up, we're about, so next month, you'll see the double hit there. But all in all, that, that'll straighten itself out by the end of next month. The tuition out of district, which is always our issue, at this point, we're 31% used. We're having our first meeting in the next week or two to sort of take a look at the chart and see what's happening. You know, do we have, how many more new children are out of district? I know we had a couple kids, we just had a kid move in the other day that was at Lighthouse, but they lived somewhere else, and they moved to Nashua. And now we get to pay for Lighthouse instead of whoever else used to pay for Lighthouse.
Yeah. I have a question about transportation services, but you probably don't know, know this, but this is about each school. Do you know if each school keeps tabs on how many of their students are walkers and how many are bus? Do we have those numbers?
Well, we know how many are on buses.
Right.
By school, I would think, I think we could get that information if you wanted that.
And the reason, I'll tell you the reason why I'm asking is because we're, we're going to be making some, we're going to make some decisions about Elm Street. You know, a possible, either, I guess they're, they're talking about renovation, or if it doesn't, if, if something different happens, then we close down Elm Street, we go to a different school. Now, all of a sudden, we may have a bigger demand for buses, because it, it all depends on what, what the walkers are and how many are, are walking to school and how, how many more we're going to add to buses. And bus, busing seems to be a big, becoming more expensive. So I, I'd like to, it's not a question for you, it's just a question I'm kind of throwing out there, something that the district maybe should ponder about trying to, trying to get teachers, trying to get principals to get more kids to walk to school, safe routes to schools, bicycling to school, walking to school, although if we locate somewhere else, they may not even have those options because of the way the roads are, unfortunately. But that's just something I was thinking out loud about. So I'll let you to continue.
No, but I think your point on, on Elm Street, if we do make the move, I mean, Elm Street being in the city.
Yeah.
Versus the potential site, which is not in the city.
Right.
You're certainly going to have more, if you keep the same district.
Yeah.
You're going to have more students taking buses to go to Elm Street.
If those student, those students may not all go to that new school, but they may end up going to one or the other. They may end up going to Fairgrounds or Penechak, and, and they may be going longer distances. So I, I don't know what the, let's just say, for argument's sake, that say 50% of the kids at Elm Street are not bust, you know? Now we may be close to 70 or 80% from that district, you know? I'm just throwing numbers out there, but I, I, it would be interesting to look at the statistics.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly do the, I mean, we can take a look at Elm Street and sort of get that data, see how long that takes.
Yeah.
So we can, I'll put that on the list.
Right, because that might be a hidden cost, that might be a hidden cost.
Yeah.
That might be a hidden cost for, and it may be worth, even though it's, even though it's an extra cost, it still may be worth to go to the new high school, because all the other costs and everything else outweigh, the benefits will outweigh that cost. But that just be, might be one of the costs that we, we should, we should be looking at anyways.
Okay. All right, other than that, page three, it's, books was a little bit high again, but we're finally running out of book money, so it can't be high too much longer. Basically, there was a bunch of English, English Language Arts books, about $35,000 purchased for the middle schools, so that's what most of that $40,000 was. And the indirect costs, that's the money we get back from the grants for, for doing all the work. You'll notice that's the first, first entry was made by the grants manager, so that's $30,000. And I guess the only other thing, I just looked at the equipment, you know, computer equipment and computer software, those lines are 85 and 79% spent, which is typically what we'll see. Most of the computers are purchased at the beginning of the year, and as, as what the software products typically are paid for on an annual basis at the beginning of the year. So other than that, we're in total, we're 26.86% spent, and so far, so good.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Does anybody have any questions or comments regarding our financial report?
Good job again.
Yeah, thank you very much for your help, Mr. Donovan. In that case, if no one has any other further business, I'd, I'd like to move to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Porter at, at 8:16. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Garino votes yes, so we are adjourned at 8:16 PM.